I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you everybody for coming this evening. Okay, the first thing we have on the agenda is the consent agenda.
There are no additions. I'll make a motion. The consent agenda be approved.
Hold on one second. Did you print anything off about that hand tracker thing from Hi-Ton?
Oh, no, I didn't.
Because we should probably, if we're gonna do it, we need to do it now because...
They're not charging, they're charging.
I said it was a discount on our insurance.
Okay, yeah.
It's more secure for, so we don't get half.
It's twenty-four dollars.
Yeah, but the board needs to know what it is, Joe. You can't just tell them it's twenty-four. I can go up here then.
Yeah, okay. We're just gonna take a quick pause.
Everybody ready for Christmas? It's so quiet in here.
Well, it's still hot, it's late into half.
I know.
It's not December twenty-fourth yet, I haven't been chatting.
The end sign driver's busy though.
Oh, I am.
How's Deb doing? How's Deb doing?
She's doing fine.
Is she?
Yeah. Hurt a bit, but...
Yeah.
Did she get out to her physical therapist?
Not yet.
Not yet?
They gave her some home stuff.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
And then will they come to the house or will she go to them?
Uh, that's gonna be arranged with a doctor.
Okay.
At that time, that would be next week sometime.
Yeah. Oh, I wish her well. Nixie's staying out of her way, not tripping her up.
That's her job, didn't you know that?
So what's different since the last time I was here? Obviously painted. You got new floor?
It's all renovated.
No.
The floors are...
New windows.
The floors are already...
New drywall, new ceiling.
Ceilors have been bumped.
We put a new rough on it, on the outside.
Exciting. We had a lot of water damage.
Well, it's looking...
It's an old building.
Yeah, that's a fabulous thing.
It'll last longer than it would.
That's right.
Probably.
But isn't it so much prettier?
It is.
I missed you on Halloween. To where? I know, but you're supposed to stop first. I have a book for her.
I had to pick her up from the office.
Oh. I'll save the book for her.
They didn't turn out the greatest for my email, but... Did I get somebody to...
Of course, you know, of course. Sometimes that's all...
Okay, so that'll be Q R. Okay. Okay, we have an addition to the agenda. Any other questions or motion?
You did a motion, does it still stand?
Yes.
Would it be an addition?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have support?
I'll support.
Okay, we have motion support to approve the consent agenda with the one agenda item added. Okay, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Okay, good. Budget amendments, we're having a bit of an issue with BSNA right now with being making, be able to make budget adjustments in it. So I'll have something for the board next month, okay? Okay, new business. East China operating, East China School District operating mills renewal presentation.
Casco Township takes great pleasure in welcoming East China Superintendent Suzanne Sebula and her... Aunt Lee.
Thank you, Mrs. Stover. My name is Suzanne Sebula, I'm the superintendent for East China School District.
And I'm Aunt Chigleeta, I'm the finance director for East China School District.
And we have one of our Board of Education members, Mrs. Jessica Becker, is here with us as well. Before I give the operating mills information that I'm here to share, I thought it'd be a good time for me to give you a quick update on the bond or the construction that's happening in East China School District. I'm just gonna read real quickly some of the things that are happening. So throughout the entire school district, we have new technology that includes Chromebooks for all students, new technology for teachers, and all of our infrastructure technology upgrades are complete. We have built an innovation center at Meisner Road with ten classrooms. The office and conference room was also built with the innovation center at Meisner Road. There was a new road built from King Road to the path in our stadium. The renovations of the bathrooms and concession stands at the stadium are complete, along with the new entrance to the, to the field. New tennis courts were installed and built at Marine City Campus, Marine City High School, Middle School. Bell River Elementary this past summer, got all-new parking lot and lights. At the Marine City Campus, which is our six-twelve campus, sixth grade, six through twelve. Over the summer, ten classrooms were renovated. The counseling and administration offices were renovated and moved to the Ward Street entrance of the school. The cafeteria is under complete construction and renovation, and that will be open on January twenty-second. The media center is currently going under renovations, complete renovation, hoping to have that done before Christmas break. The east side of the Marine City Campus has all-new parking lot and lights. On the SC end of our school district, St. Clair End, we have a new gym at the St. Clair High School campus that just opened a couple weeks ago. Brand-new gym and locker rooms. There's a new parking lot and lights on the east side of the St. Clair Campus, and the student parking lot, which they call the pit, was also redone with new lights. In other district news, we have hired a safety and security director for East China School District. They work for us, it's not an SRO. And we're hiring our second safety and security director as I speak. We have social workers at every school. Used to be three for the entire district, and we now have at least one in every building, most have two. We do have an SRO at the Marine City Campus, that's a school resource officer that works for the Marine City Police Department. We have bought all-new curriculum materials throughout the entire district. And we hired what we call interventionists for middle and high schools, which are teachers that, certified teachers that come in and pull students out when they're struggling in a class, help them out, and then get them back into their classroom. This is for all, all our students, general ed and special ed, whoever might need a little assistance. So we have those at our elementaries and high schools now for math and ELA. So I know that was quick, but I just thought it would be a good opportunity to share with everybody how your money is being spent, both your tax dollars and the bond money that you so generously supported our school district with. So for tonight, I'm here to just share with you information about the operating mills renewal that will be on the February twenty-seventh ballot. East China School District is seeking an operating mills renewal of nineteen. So this is, we're renewing what's already in place. The renewal is for nine years. Homeowners do not pay this tax. So anyone, principal residents, do not pay this tax. But all districts in the state of Michigan are required to have all voters vote on it. It's a function of Proposal A. So Proposal A says that all of our voters in our school district have to vote on the eighteen mills operating tax, but, but it's not on principal residences. It's on businesses, on landowners, or second residences. So it's kind of a strange function, but everyone votes, but it doesn't affect everyone. If the operating mills does not pass, the district does not receive its full funding. So when you hear on the news that every school district gets amount of money per pupil, our per pupil funding, our, East China School District gets nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars per student. So you hear about count days. We count all our kids, and then the state gives us money based on how many kids we have. If the operating mills does not pass, we don't get that full funding. So it's, it's kind of a, just a weird way that the legislation is set up for schools to receive their funding. For East China School District, this operating mills generates about fourteen million dollars for our budget, which is just over thirty percent of our total budget. So without it, we would have to reduce our total operations by thirty percent, which is almost unattainable. So every school district in Michigan is required to do what I'm doing tonight, to share this information with you, with the voters, and with your boards, so that you can understand why we're doing it and the requirement for school districts to receive our full funding. So with that, is there anything that I forgot?
I got a question.
Certainly.
On that, say you own a farm with a house on it, not your, how your home where you live, that's gonna get stuck with that eighteen mills, right?
Yeah, it already is, right now.
I know, I know, when I write my checks, oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there would be no change to...
Nothing for it, other than the bill.
Other than a fabulous school district that is supporting...
You're in the Richmond School District.
But I got property in East China.
I know.
Yeah, and it's so... Yeah, it's always the way it's been. So, you know, we've talked about this in our office. If you had a business and you didn't want to pay this tax and you wanted to move elsewhere, every school district in Michigan is required to do these same eighteen mills. So it's, it's just a function of that Proposal A legislation that requires it, so.
So it's vacant land and businesses with maybe eighteen mills. Everything else, if you look on your tax bill, it says it'll give the eighteen mills, and it'll say exempt. Because if you're a homeowner, you're exempt. Just don't buy that second home.
I have a little question, I have my comment from the clerk's office. Thank you for doing this in February and not May.
You are welcome.
It'll save you guys money too.
Yes, yes, yes. We're interested to see how this next election will run though with the extended...
We are too.
Extended time, yeah.
So are we. Yeah, it'll be interesting.
Well, thank you very much for having us too here, and everyone have a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you.
You're always welcome. Good to see you, Jessica.
All right. I don't have it prepared, but I will have a preliminary budget in front of you the next meeting. I'm starting just to build it. And like I said earlier, I had some issues with BSNA, which is still being resolved, so. Okay, next one C is Casco Township Farmland rental agreement extension. This is our farmland that we, our township land on Meisner Road, which we rent out to a local farmer. And it's the same agreement, although we had to up the rent. We had to increase a hundred and thirty-three dollars from three thousand five hundred and one dollars to three thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars.
What does that figure out per acre? That's ninety-seven acres, right?
No, they only do fifty-two acres.
So?
Yeah. So he only farms fifty-two acres.
What was the dollar? Are you going up to max down for rent?
Yeah.
Thirty-six, thirty-four.
Pardon me?
Thirty-six, thirty-four.
Thirty-four dollars.
Okay. Any questions on this?
No, this is all right with Mr. Campo?
Yeah, yeah, he had no problem with it.
All right. Then I'll make a motion to extend the Casco Township Farmland Rental Agreement for one year for Mr. Robert Campo for the amount of three thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Okay.
Oh. Three thousand... The amount due.
It's the bottom.
Oh, oh, there's a discount.
Yeah.
Thirty-three, forty-three, twenty-eight.
All right.
For the web, three, three, twenty?
Yeah. Okay. Do we have support for this?
Sure, support.
We have motion support to extend the extension for one year for three thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty cents to Mr. Robert Campo. Okay, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next one is our Board of Trustees meeting for dates for two thousand twenty-four. All meetings are held on the second Tuesday of each month unless otherwise stated. All meetings are held at the Casco Township Hall at forty-five twelve Melvin Road, Casco, Michigan. Do we have to list out all the dates that we require?
No, it's all right here.
Well, I thought everyone, the clerks got in print, so you had a...
I already double-checked all the dates.
Okay, good deal.
I mean, if you want to, go ahead.
No, well, they're all the second Tuesday of each month at seven o'clock.
It's all on the website.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, the motion to accept the dates.
I still move.
Okay, support?
I'll support.
Motion support to accept the two thousand twenty-four Board of Trustees meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Okay, Casco Township holiday close schedule for two thousand twenty-four. We follow the Township Hall, the same schedule. Is the St. Clair County Court system, so.
Unless there's falls on a Friday, which we're closed, then we'll do it either the Thursday before or the Monday.
Okay, good deal. So these will also...
What other options do you have other than following the court schedule?
We don't. I mean, that's the option.
Yeah, we decided that's what we wanted to do.
Well, yeah, for an extra holiday pay, I would think you would, like that Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
That's the way it is.
Yeah. Okay, any questions?
Will that be posted on the website?
Yes, it will be.
Maybe in the sign up form.
They're always hanging in the window.
No. I make a motion to approve the holiday schedule as proposed.
Okay, we have a second for that.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have motion support to accept the holiday schedule for Casco Township for two thousand twenty-four. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, I got, first one is to reappoint Sue Coppins to the Planning Commission for a three-year term, starting January first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending two thousand twenty-six. I think Sue Coppins is, has a, making of a very good planning commissioner. She asks relevant questions, she's smart, and she's a good addition to the team there.
I make a motion to reappoint Sue Coppins to the Planning Commission for the term stated.
Okay, any support?
Support.
Okay, motion support to, to reappoint Sue Coppins to a three-year term to the Casco Township Planning Commission. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, I'd like to reappoint Jim Ewald to a three-year term to Casco Township Zone Board of Appeals, starting one January two thousand twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
I make a motion to appoint, to reappoint Jim Ewald to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the term stated.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support to reappoint Jim Ewald to a three-year term to Casco Township Zoning Board of Appeals, starting January first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending December twenty, December first, two thousand twenty-six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, we have Chris Kabaki for a three-year term as an alternate for the Casco Township Zone Board of Appeals, starting one January two thousand twenty-four, and ending December twenty, thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Motion to support nomination of Chris Kabaki for a three-year term.
Okay. Do we...
I'll support.
Yeah, we have motion support to reappoint Chris Kabaki. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, motion carries. Okay, all right. Okay, we have twenty, twenty twenty-three winter taxes for a Meisner Road property. It comes out to eight hundred nineteen dollars and seventy cents.
I make a motion to pay the taxes for the Meisner Road property in the amount of eight hundred nineteen dollars and seventy cents.
Okay, do we have support for that?
Support.
Okay, we have motion support to pay the property on Meisner Road Township property for eight hundred nineteen dollars and seventy cents.
That's it, ninety-seven acres?
Yes, yeah. Roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Motion carries. Okay, invoice for Tuma, for the Golden Hawk, for the amount of five hundred and forty dollars. This is what the work that Shelley did on doing the appraisal for that, so we could, it can be assessed fairly.
I make a motion to approve the invoice to Mr. Tuma in the amount of five hundred and forty dollars.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support to pay the bill to Mr. Tuma for the Golden Hawk worth for five hundred and forty dollars. Roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, but I guess the motion carries. Okay, invoice for PM Blough Incorporated for the amount of one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. This is for work they did on for the overview on the park construction.
I make a motion that we pay Ms. Blough or the corporation one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars for services received on the park.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support to pay PM Blough Incorporated one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. Roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, we have a high-tech quote for Adobe.
We already paid for one license, so we have two.
Two more.
I think one of the building clerks had requested to get another one. I don't think we should do that at this point. I think we just hold off. We have one in the clerk's office, so anybody could use it, and the same thing in the building office. Just an opinion.
I'm not allowed access to Katie's Adobe.
Well, how often are you gonna use it?
I have no idea how often I'm gonna use it, but when your office was approached, I was present, and Katie was not requesting it for herself alone.
Okay.
We are needing it as a department, not as an individual. And if she's not here and I need it, I cannot access it.
You know how to use it and everything now, or not?
She would teach me.
That was just my comment, you guys...
Well, if we don't need it.
Well, she's saying she needs it, so.
No, I don't think I need it. The department needs it, not just Brenda. It's for the building department. Right now, we have equal access to everything that we need.
Well, I'm just saying because like if Vicky doesn't have access to it, but she can, if she used to use it, she's more than welcome to come on my computer and use it.
Well, I don't know how that can happen because I, it was explained to me by the high-tech guy who came that day that I can't use it.
On your computer?
I have no access to Katie's computer. I don't know her passwords to get in. Perhaps you and Jennifer, or you and Vicky have that option, that she can get into your system if you're not there. Our office is not set up that way.
However you guys wanna work it. I just, at this point, I, I know I've had a couple occasions when I've had to use it.
Well, can we, can it be high-tech configured, so you have...
It's per license.
It's per license.
I think when you approved it last month, you weren't understanding that you were getting one. Because Katie already has hers. That was not approved. So you're approving one that has already been installed for five hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Okay.
They installed that and it has not yet been paid for.
I see.
I think when you approved it last month, you were under the impression because Vicky made the statement that the building department might need it, not Katie, but the department.
Right.
And so that, I believe, that was the premise under which you approved it.
Okay.
We did it.
So...
What if we, I don't know if we can do it. I'm sure high-tech could do it. What if we have them transfer it and just put it on your computer?
Well, he called me, the gentleman, I can't remember what his name was. He has it. He was ready to install it while you were off. I said it hasn't been approved yet.
Right, right. But what I'm saying is, it, because I don't, I don't know if there's a need for all of us to have it. It's, it's an occasional document that we might need to, to put in there.
Right, but we don't know when that circumstance arises.
And that's why I'm saying, so if I, if she has a document that she needs to, to put in Adobe, she can come and use my, you could come use my computer, I don't care.
That's not the way I understood it from the gentleman there.
You can, you just can't share the license, but you can come on my computer. It's, it's licensed to my computer. It doesn't matter if I'm using it or she's using it. They just don't want you to have like three people on three different computers using the same license.
Are you concerned about if Katie is not present and you need to use it?
Yeah, she's gonna have to give me all her passwords for access. It's a five hundred and twenty-two dollar one.
I take back what I said, it's fine.
When you approved it last month, what were you assuming?
I was assuming that we were getting two. Or that the building department, both of your computers would work, and the clerks, and the deputy clerks would work. That's what I was assuming, because I'm not a techie person.
Right.
I was assuming the same thing because when he came to install it... I was assuming the same thing, because when he came to install it in Katie's computer, I asked him if he needed me to leave my chair, so he could install it in mine, and he said, you're not getting it. And I was kind, and I didn't say anything, because I did go in and speak with Jennifer, but I didn't know what Katie's impression was. So when she was at, when we were back in the office together, I asked her specifically, and she said, no, we both need it.
How long is this license good for?
It's a year.
Then I thought it was a one-time fee.
It's forever, okay.
Seems to me anybody who needs it should have easy access to it. It's not a security issue. It's a convenience and an exclusivity.
And you said you needed it, Jennifer. I'm not saying that because.
It's, it's one of those things, though, it's one, very rarely will we, you know.
But we don't know when that's going to be.
I know.
So it would be the same for you as it would be for me?
It's my point, though, is.
Well, I just, we are a department.
Yeah.
And that was the premise under which the conversation was made, and perhaps breakdown in communication misconstrued of the intent. It was not intended that one.
We're talking about one $500 license for a program that's in general use across the country for doing documents. I don't know why we can't just have that installed in that department and let them use it, like everybody else would use it. I don't quite get this.
I'll make a motion to approve the high-tech quote for two additional licenses in the amount of $1,044. I'll support that.
Okay, we have motion support to approve two additional licenses from high-tech for, for $1,044. Ro call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, we have pay increase for election workers.
So we have word from the state that they are going to reimburse us for $15 an hour for the election inspectors, and they are reimbursing us, each presidential primary, they reimburse us for expenses anyway, unless they decide to change that. This year, they are also reimbursing us for the August primary and the August, for the November general. I don't see that continuing in the future. Just a feeling that all these mandatory changes from Proposition 22-2, we are going to have to fund that stuff eventually. This year, they're helping us, but in 2026 and 2020, we're going to be on our own.
Okay, but the pay increase, I mean, I'm sorry, you said we're going to get reimbursed from the state for this?
Yes, and if, we're trying to find people to work nine days of early voting plus Election Day. We're talking 80, 81 hours for early voting, and then.
That's an estimate.
That's an estimate. Maybe 17 hours on Election Day, and to ask people to come in here for 13 bucks an hour when they can go to McDonald's and get 15 bucks an hour to start.
Or you want to have something on top of the stuff you get from the.
No, I want $15 an hour.
Okay.
Yeah. And then I want, actually, do I want more? I want sub, what did I say?
1750?
Or 18? 18 for the chairs.
For the chairs.
Just because they do a little bit more work.
Yeah, they do.
They have a lot more responsibility. So $15 an hour for just inspectors, and then 18 for the chair people.
I so move.
Okay, we have motion support to approve the pay increase for the election workers. The ro call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Yeah, with, with the changes in next year, with the election coming on, we need to support the clerk's department as much as we can. It's going to be tough for them. So, okay. Posted for, posted for mandatory early voting center postcards.
So we have to send it. So, I'm sorry, it's $562.09 for 3,286 postcards.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
And the state's not paying us back.
Okay.
I'll support.
Okay, we have motion support to pay the, the amount of, for the early voting postcard for $562.09. Ro call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. Okay.
I'm not paying attention.
Code enforcement update. Kurt?
You're up.
Yeah. All right, you guys had some questions? Just so that the board had some questions.
We just want to thank you for taking on this responsibility. We want the rest of the board to know that you're in the office and what you're doing. And do we have a report?
I got it right here.
Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted.
No, we have identified some, some structurals that needed to be removed. Kurt's been working with the owners on that to get that process rolling. We had some other issues that he's been engaging on. We got basically one round. Now we've been searching for some other areas of concern within the township that needs attention.
What about the guy living in the barn?
On Lindsay there. I spoke with her last week. She said that she is living in Richmond now, and that she's not living on the property or staying on the property. I said, that's fine. She can, you know, she can't stay on the property, live on the property. If I get more complaints, she said she's not staying there. He says, you can go there to visit, but you can't stay overnight. You cannot live in the barn. So she's fully aware of that. So if I get more complaints, then we'll move further on that. And they did move all their household stuff out of the barn, so they vacated the property.
Wasn't there a man there?
Yeah, 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 her boyfriend, but I think he's out of town most of the time. And a lot of times she goes there to tend to cats or whatever that's in the barn.
We certainly don't expect you to come to every board meeting. I would hope that we get a summary list like this, and to see what is being resolved, when it's resolved, so we can cross it off our list and not keep revisiting the same situation, or at least know where it is we are in the process with the situation. I'll make copies of this. These are all of the reports that he has done. There's only one copy. That's exactly what I wanted, and I thank you for it. And as I say, it's, it's not necessary for you to come to these meetings. I know it's a long day for you, and this is what I was interested in having in my files, so we can just see where we are.
Yeah, Kurt?
And is there anything else that we can do to help the process along with you?
Well, we're just still working on getting a process down that's going to work for everything. Our main focus is, you know, junk vehicles, blight situations. There's a lot of blight in the township, working without permits, stuff like that.
Yeah, Kurt has a good system down. He has a, he also, he already has a professional relationship with our township attorney. He's great to work with. I, I could text him anytime, or he could text me anytime, and.
Your report should be to the entire township board.
Okay.
And citizens?
And citizens.
No.
Why not?
Well.
It's public record, isn't it?
Well, and it is public record, but.
No, no buts, Colleen. I might have my name in there.
As a matter of fact.
I'd like to have a copy of every one of them you got.
And that's fine, but my point in saying is that you are the lead enforcement officer. I don't need to give you a packet of breadcrumbs. I think you can find your way around the township, and you will know what is being worked on. I see a couple barns here and there that are flattened, but I know that people have been notified. They're going to take care of it. We don't need to bully anybody. We just need to make people aware of the situation, that it needs to be taken care of, and I think you're doing that. I think you act very professionally. I appreciate it. And I don't want to add to your burden. I just want these reports and shared with the township. And if someone has a question about a situation, we can say. We're either not aware of it at all, or, yes, we're working on it.
Sure.
So, Colleen, will you make those reports monthly before this meeting, this monthly?
I would, that's what I'm hoping for.
Okay, so if somebody has a specific question, you've got to write it.
That's what I'm hoping for, yes, because I don't want to drag him out in the middle of the night. He's done his work. All he has to do is send it to us, so we, we can answer questions. And, and if there are questions that you have that come up, that we can make notes on and get back to him, let's do it that way, shall we?
You know, you said my name was not in there. When you first started your job around June, I'm thinking, I do believe my name, because he was in my driveway. Remember that day? So.
Well, perhaps you've been examining.
Right.
Right.
But perhaps if I look through here, I'll see the name of the person that you had such a difficult time with in your neighborhood is no longer here.
I know.
Let's hope.
I have a copy of every one of them you got. There was a time.
Well, that'll cost you candy cane.
Does the board have any more questions?
I'm talking. Yes, if you don't mind. Is there anything, as I say, that we can do to make your job easier?
Not at this time.
And I appreciate your efforts, and I appreciate this information very much, and how you're going about it. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
I'll wait till the public has.
I have a question.
You wait.
If there's like a question, somebody has a question about a certain property, do we call you, and then you?
No.
You call you.
No.
If you have a complaint about a property, preferably, we'd like you to come in and fill out a complaint form. That gives us all your information, where the complaint is, if you appear in court, if we need you to, and so on. So that's just a call and a complaint. We would rather have a.
And the forms are here?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
But you take the calls. You take the calls.
Yes, yes, yes.
So my, my, my point with that is, and I've always had this point, there should be one point man who, if there's a drainage problem, with, and you have to call the drain commission, the road commission, this man, one person should be making those phone calls. He can't take, you know, six calls from everybody here.
In this office?
He has, you have a phone in this office with an extension in this office? Yes. That's the contact person. If we can do that, I would be very happy, very happy. Just like you have a problem with the crew chief on the road commission, you call this office, and one person will call the crew chief. Because if 10 people call, then he might just quit in the middle of December.
Yeah, well, the code enforcement, he deals with enforcing the code, stuff like with the road commission and the.
I know that. I know that. Everybody knows that. It's just that we have too many people making too many calls, okay? Let's keep it. You have a line.
Yeah.
You have a number. Call it, okay?
And if it's not in my wheelhouse, I can.
Then you can always refer it to the clerk.
Correct.
Thank you.
I said, when you first call in, the message will tell you what Kurt's extension is. It's right in the beginning, so if you're not sure, it's also on the website.
And I'll see that these get copied and distributed.
All right.
Thank you for coming.
All right, Township Office addition update. This is the township we're going to be building addition out to the south of here to provide a second ADA compliant voting precinct, as well as increased office space. I talked to an architect. He has completed the construction drawings, and he will have them delivered on Thursday.
Then we should be going out for bids by the end of December.
Yeah.
Grand.
Yeah.
Is that made public? Open bids?
Oh, yes. Yes.
How will that affect your parking then?
What's that?
How will that affect your parking?
Well, it's not taking up any, it ain't going to be taking up any existing parking spaces. Yeah.
No, it's, no, it's here, where the, where the flags are.
It's bad.
It's there. It's somewhere around here. There.
South of the off.
And with the non-compliant structure as this one is, from your setback from Melville and Lindsay, are there any hurdles, or you just do what you want to do? If it was anybody else, it may be an issue, right?
We have to provide an ADA compliant voting precinct, another one.
I'm going on non-code structures. What is it, 140 by 140? If it were anybody else, what hurdles would you require them to jump?
We'll talk about later, Jim, okay?
You always want to put it down the road. Let's talk about it now.
We'll talk about later, okay? All right, so we'll be having, so Chris will be in here on Thursday morning with our construction drawings. Okay, any questions? Okay, next one is Six River Land Conservancy, an agreement to purchase the Cornwall property. We have Chris Bunch here from Six Rivers.
Well, thank you. Thanks so much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk about this, and I'm very excited that you guys are interested in adding to the Bell River Park. That's a fabulous, fabulous facility, and I'm really excited to think about expanding. So, first of all, I'll apologize. You were expecting to get Brian, and he had a personal issue arise, and so they let me out tonight and sent me out to talk a little bit about this. I know Brian has given you a copy of the assist agreement that we use. What we are anticipating is that we would work with you very much like we did on the, on the last acquisition, to come in and acquire the property and hold it for you, while you then apply to the Natural Resources Trust Fund for a grant to purchase the property. And the, the letter of intent sort of spells out that process. You know, what, what we do is get paid a facilitation fee for helping with that, because we take care of all of the transactional pieces of it. We borrow the money. By the time, by the time this comes to you, it will have all of the typical things resolved that happen with a real estate transaction. There will be clear title, there will have been environmental inspections, you know, all of those things will have been taken care of. We, you know, I know that you will probably have Pam actually write the trust fund grant, but we will work directly with you guys and the trust fund as this goes through the process, to try and make sure that this gets funded. And Joe and I were talking a little bit before the meeting. We have a pretty strong relationship with the Natural Resources Trust Fund. We have two projects in front of them right now. We did your project 2016? Is that right? 2016, something like that?
Yeah.
And that one got funded. And, you know, we've done some other ones here in St. Clair County. We did the North Chandler acquisition. So, so the nature of the agree, the nature of ultimately how this will work, the letter of intent just starts us out and says that we all agree that we're going to go forward with this, and then we will start working with the landowner to try and get a purchase agreement. And we will, assuming that we get agreement on price with them and with you, then we will move forward with getting a purchase agreement with the seller, and getting a purchase agreement with you to buy it from us once you get the money. So we will have a purchase agreement from the seller, and we will have a backup agreement from you guys that says that you will purchase it from us once you get the money. That way, then, we have something to show the bank when we go in to borrow the money to acquire the property. So what happens then is that you guys will, at the end. guys will, at the end of the pipe, you will cash us out for the property. You will cover our transaction costs, the things that we have to do to clear the title and all of that, title inspections and environmental inspections and title insurance and all of those types of things. And you'll, you'll pay the balance of the facilitation fee at the time that we transfer the property to you. So the facilitation fee that we have set for this one is $20,000. We would do $5,000 at the time of the letter of intent, at the time you execute that. Then at the time that we actually take title to the property, at the time that we buy it, that we cash it out, you would pay us another $5,000. The balance would come due when you get the grant, and you pay us off and take title to the property. So I can't remember, Colleen was here, I can't remember who else was here when we did the first one. We used to do, the way we used to structure these transactions, that facilitation fee was built into the purchase price when you bought it from us, and we have, to make it cleaner and more transparent for everybody, we've just separated it out. We spell it out in this letter of intent.
Yeah.
So that way you know going in upfront what it is, and it's easier for us to track, all of us to track through the process.
Yeah. Go ahead.
This property is 26 acres directly east, adjacent to the existing park property right now, which our park property is 18 acres. So this would more than double the size of that.
Give you additional frontage on the belt.
Is that Malcolm Simon's little farm?
No, no, it's Mr. Cornwall. Mr. Cornwall. Malcolm is one farm to the east.
What, what is the asking price? We don't have that in our information. Do we know what the asking price is?
You know, I, it was, let's say, like 740?
So where are we coming up with 740, though?
So you'll, so I'm, so I apologize for not being privy to these details, because Brian was, my land protection manager was the one who was actually doing this. So I don't know what the listing price is. I'll take your word for it. But what you do is you apply to the Natural Resources Trust Fund. The trust fund will give you 75% of the purchase price.
I talked to the realtor, and the realtor himself says the property is highly overinflated. And he says actually the most valuable was just the three front acres that's currently zoned commercial, because the back portion of it's recreation open space.
Well, let him sell us the back acres then for recreation open space and put a business up front like a Dairy Queen.
That's a great idea.
I know it is. I know it is.
Well, I mean...
I, we...
We don't need the front.
I'm, I'm thinking, if that were my property, with the way land prices are going in Casco Township right now, I'd be asking 800,000 for it.
So 185,000 would be our cut for 740.
Yeah.
Where are we coming up with 185,000?
Well, that's the thing. I mean, do you, when you, you put in for a purchase agreement, is there negotiations on, I mean, we have to get the property appraised, right?
Because we're paying $20,000 to start this process.
Yeah. So there are a number of steps that will happen, right? So the trust fund process requires an appraisal. We typically ask that we do an appraisal at the front end of this. Instead of waiting until the grant has come through, we want to do the appraisal at the
front end, and then that is part of our negotiation discussion with the seller, right? The seller, you know, seller wants 800,000 and the appraisal says it's worth five. And we say, well, that's fabulous. As we used to say when I lived up north in a town like this, well, that's fabulous. People inhale on ice water, too, right? So we, we might, you know, we might not be able to get to the finish line with this. But we'll suggest that we do the appraisal at the front end, probably do a purchase offer contingent upon appraisal, just like you do when you're buying a house, contingent upon inspections, which will include the environmental due diligence, and all of those, all of those individual items are a potential offering. So if the price is too much and we can't come to agreement based on the appraisal, we back out. If, if it's got environmental conditions that are a problem and, and they can't be resolved, then we have the ability to back out.
Okay.
So those are very typical, and those will show up in the purchase agreement, which we will sit down with you and your lawyers and negotiate before we go forward. And we won't sign a purchase agreement with them until you guys are comfortable, because we don't want to be stuck holding the back.
Right. So I mean, if part of the negotiation, if we do the appraisal saying, hey, we'd like, let's say, the back 23 acres.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, so if, if the back 23 acres is worth 300,000, I'm pulling numbers out of the, I don't know, right? So if, if the back 23 acres is worth 300,000 and we make an offer for that and they accept that, then, then the price, then what the trust fund would provide you is 225,000, and what you would have to come up with is 75,000.
Okay.
And where does that come from? You know, that's, that's another question. Does it come out of your general fund? Do we look for other funding sources? Do you, I know that in St. Clair County, St. Clair County Parks gives you a percentage of their millage every year, and I think that's a little bit of what was used when we did the...
About 17,000 a year.
Yeah, I think we, some of that is what you used when we did the first thing.
I figured you would report what's in parks and rec right now, somewhere here, somewhere.
So the 20,000 fee, is that broken down so that if, if they had to back out for some reason, that you're only paid for the portion that you paid?
That's right, that's right. Yeah, so if we back out, that's right. You're not going to pay the whole thing if we don't close the deal. So if, if we do 5,000 at the front end is what, you know, gets us digging in and doing a lot of this work, and then we get to a stopping point, that's it. If we end up taking title of the property, then by the time we take title of the property, we all are 99% sure that this is a done deal. Because we're, you know, just like, just like you guys, I respond to a board of trustees, and my board of trustees are not going to step into risk without knowing that we've got it covered on the backside.
So you mentioned your interest in the back X amount of acres.
Well, plus, okay.
Is that one parcel as it stands right now? Would have to be split. So you'd have to, the Cornwalls would have to split the property. Yes. It would be a property split before you could take any interest in the back... If we wanted to do recreational open split, would we even consider this?
Or you buy the whole thing and then sell it for the acres?
Yeah, and have to split.
And we would do the split.
And you could put the Dairy Queen...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and that's...
As this is cadu, yeah.
Yeah.
Would you like to open up a...
And, you know, as we all know, everything in real estate is negotiable, right? So it's certainly possible that we could sit down and talk, and you could say, look, we only want the back. Cornwall say, we want to sell the whole thing. You say, fine, we want to split the frontage off and sell it. You guys handle it, because we don't want to deal with it, right? So at the end of the pipe, you know, what we want to apply for is a grant for the back 23 acres or whatever the number is, and we're going to use the proceeds from selling the frontage as part of our match for the back, right? So there's a number of ways that we can put this together so that, you know, you end up with what you want now.
So if we decide tonight to go ahead with it, all of this is, will be five grand that starts a...
Five grand, and we start knocking on doors and coming to you and saying, here's what we think. What do you think? What do you want to do? And we'll, we'll come to you first and get marching orders before we knock on a door.
Right.
We're not going to go out and make representations about what the township will do without knowing what the township wants and what the township will do.
Okay. All right. Okay, but this is the board thing.
My concern, looking at these numbers from Colleen...
Oh, there's my numbers. I wondered where they went.
Looking for, looking at these numbers, we're still trying to pay for this other part of the park that we're working on right now.
Right.
We're going to have expenses on that. Where are we coming up with the money? If you look at the bottom line here, because I know we have a grant, but right now we're having to pay it up front and waiting for reimbursement.
Yeah, and that I wasn't aware of, so...
Me either.
We're kind of stuck in a hard place here.
Right.
And then there's going to be other expenses along the line. So again, how are we going to pay for that?
And we don't know how much.
And we don't know how much. Those are important questions.
I mean, I hate to be, I don't want to be short-sighted, you know? I don't want to be the guy that said, no, we don't need a central park here in New York. But can we afford this? Because one thing we do not want to do is tap into the general fund to support parks.
No.
No.
That's...
No, because there's an ongoing...
Yes, there's ongoing upkeep.
Exactly.
So, you know, it seems to me that there are some other, other conversations to have.
Yes.
And there are other sources out there for funding other than tapping into your general fund. We'd have to think a little bit about that. You know, we, a little bit before the meeting, there was some conversation about the Lake to Lake Trail, and this actually would be an interesting candidate to try and solicit some funding as a stop on the Lake to Lake Trail.
The Wilson, Wilson.
Certainly could be Wilson, but there are probably other sources out there as well. Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan matches some of them. And of course, you've got a St. Clair County Community Foundation. So there are some other sources out there where we could go looking for some additional dollars to offset some of the costs. In relation to maintaining the property, I will, I will tell you the same thing I tell everybody else, which is, I believe it was Mark Twain who said, "I land, they ain't making any more."
I know.
And what, and what we tell people is, get the land, then you've got forever to figure out what to do with it, right? You've already got an existing park next door that you're making improvements on, making, adding additional land to it will not hurt anything, nor does it require you to do anything. You don't have to come in there and put trails and parking lots and all that in there if you've already got that next door. But you will have the opportunity to do it in the future. If you don't get the land, you won't have the opportunity. But there clearly are some, some discussions that need to evolve a little bit about where the rest of the, where the rest of the money might come from.
Right.
I think it's an unusual opportunity for the township to try to get this land.
What if we sold the Meister property and used that money?
That's a possibility, too.
That's something coming up. I have...
You know, that is definitely a more prime area for the community to use than...
I have two other properties and a bridge to sell.
You got an island, too?
I got an island, I got a bridge. I do have two properties to sell.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm here to talk about the, I'm here to talk about the assist agreement and actually stepping in and doing the acquisition for, for you guys. I will take that off, hat off for just a minute and put on my Land Conservancy Executive Corrector hat and, and tell you that we're very excited about this opportunity from a, purely from a conservation and water quality perspective. This is a slam dunk. It adjoins an existing park. It expands that park. It adds important protection to the Bell River. So just from a conservation perspective, we think it's a real important opportunity from the perspective of how it would score as a trust fund acquisition, because it adjoins an existing park that they are abundant, and because it's got all of these water quality benefits and is supported by the Bell River Watership Management Plan, and you'll get support from the county and friends of St. Clair River and so forth. You know, I will never tell you that it's a slam dunk for funding, because it's not over till the fat lady sings. But in all of the projects that we have submitted, this one would score really, really high, and they would be really excited about it, because it's an addition to something they've already done. And, and, you know, as you know, you've already received some development funding from them, which they are interested in doing, because it's a project that's previously funded. So there is some synergy there to capture, should you choose to go forward.
Don't forget Ducks Unlimited and St. Clair Flats Waterfowlers.
I beg your pardon?
Ducks Unlimited and St. Clair Flats Waterfowlers will donate money if it, if it's viable for them.
So what do we need to get this going? $5,000.
$5,000.
I'd move that we get this going with $5,000.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to enter the agreement and put an initial of $5,000 in with Six River Land Conservancy. Do we have support for this?
I'm looking for help with project management here. If we spend the $5,000 just to get the purchase price, just to get that going, are you going to hold our hand through this first process?
Oh, good God, yes. Oh, yeah. This, maybe I wasn't clear, but yeah, what, the only, the only thing that this doesn't cover, because, you know, you've already told us that you're going to have Pam Lau do the grant application. So we won't do the grant application for her. You're going to have somebody else do that. If we were going to do that, then, then we would add some to this. But, you know, we've just done all this for Marine City, right? We did an assist for them where we bought the property and we did the trust fund application for them, and we are finishing up getting them their money. They closed that deal in, in reimbursement. So they paid for the property, so we could pay off the loan, so they weren't continuing to pay interest while they waited for the trust fund dollars to come through. And they should get their check from the trust fund, I hope, no later than the end of next month, no later than end of January.
Yeah, because as I say, I, I don't even know where the check is coming from, from the property we're doing now.
Well, when we did the, when we did the original acquisition, I mean, you guys have gotten your money for the original acquisition. I think we did that as an escrow closing, so the trust fund brought the money to the table. You didn't pay out of pocket. We borrowed the money and bought the property from Dennis Campbell, right?
Yes.
Peter Campbell. We, we bought it from him, and then we held it, and it was about two years. And then the trust fund grant was successful, and then we worked through that process to get the money, and we used, in trust fund language, an escrow closing. So we held the property until they actually brought the money to the table. You guys did not pay it in advance. And then when it closed...
I remember the closing.
Yeah, we, we paid off the loan. You guys got the deed, and we all went about our merry way. So we would, we would do the same in this. We would stick with you from beginning to end. The only piece that's not in here is us actually writing and submitting the grant application for you. But I, you know, I can legitimately represent that I have gone to every Natural Resources Trust Fund board meeting for the almost 13 years I've been with this Conservancy. I know the board members, I know the staff real well. We work with them very closely. So this is, I mean, this is what we did.
So do we need to increase our park? I know the watershed people think this is a wonderful idea. Does Casco Township think this is a wonderful idea to double the size of our park?
Well, this is something, this is long-term. This is to benefit people that...
I realize that. It, it, the, the development of a park is long-term, but the money aspect is short-term and, and very much in our face.
It could be different if you already have a park.
I beg your pardon?
Yeah, it could be different if you already have a park that's established, but you don't.
Isn't there a lot of flash ground in there?
I beg your pardon?
Flash ground where it floods in the stream, whatever you're reading?
Yes. That's what the back acreage is.
I know that we're going to get reimbursed.
So what we would use it for?
For this.
Our trails, when it's not flooded.
It could be like the Longest Park.
Oh, the Longest.
It could be like the Longest Township's part of flooding.
Yeah.
The park that we need. So we pay 25% of that?
Generally, the Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Program is set up so that the minimum local match is 25%.
We pay this full amount, then we send in the state, and the state will reimburse us.
Okay. Because I just added up, we have $372,000 in park. That's all we got.
That's what we have.
That's it.
Yes.
So whatever we owe our percentage from, because we, we didn't get 100% grant for the, the phase one and phase two. So whatever we owe our percentage from, because we, we didn't get a hundred percent grant for the, the phase one and phase two. We didn't get a hundred percent, so what is our percentage that we owe from this three hundred and fifty-nine? That's...
That's what we need to know.
We have to pay that. It's already, it's twenty-five, is that what you think it is?
Twenty-five percent is the, is the, is the local match requirement.
Yeah, well, that's on trust fund, what does that mean?
But for, um, but for a passport grant. Oh, you got a passport, okay, I'm out.
Yeah, I don't know what I would have been...
Yeah, is that full reimbursement?
It was either twenty or twenty-five.
No. So you have a match requirement? Yeah, that's required.
Okay, so we'll just say it's twenty-five. So that's ninety thousand dollars, that's going to go out of our pocket.
And we get seventeen thousand dollars a year.
Correct. And then you're going to have ongoing expenses, upkeep.
How many phases are there?
Right, we only... Phase two, we're going to do phase three, right? So we have more expenses coming out.
Unless we sell something.
Well, we have interest on the property on St. Clair Highway.
That's what I was talking about.
Yep.
These two, we could put these up, we could put these up for sale.
We have to do so.
Two vacant lots, vacant lot Adair Road, St. Clair Highway. That, and we've got sixty-eight, we got the ninety, ninety-seven acres. We don't want to get ourselves in a financial bind here.
Aren't you selling billable ground for swamp ground?
What?
Aren't you selling billable ground, your ninety-seven acres for forty acres of swamp? Don't seem wise to me, I don't know, I might be wrong.
Well, I'm, I'm telling you, that's the front three acres with the Dairy Queen's going to save me.
Somebody's paying for Dairy, maybe I need to bring Dairy Queen to the next meeting.
I'm just saying, that's commercial property that doesn't have to be rezoned and, uh...
I mean, we could...
Would you, so let me put it to you this way.
Okay.
Uh, because clearly there are, uh, some legitimate concerns here. Uh, would it be better, uh, to revisit this question? Maybe have, uh, do a little additional research and find out, uh, you know, get a separate outside opinion about what the value of the property is, separate from the listing.
I think that'd be good.
Without, uh, you know, we certainly are not going to pay for it and I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask you to pay for an appraisal. But I think we can ask a legitimate real estate agent to give us, uh, their sense of valuation and see if the asking price is legitimate. And also take a look and see what they think, uh, the three acres, if it was separated off and sold, what that would bring. Uh, and then maybe that gives you some clearer numbers to think about. And the other thing that I would offer is this, if you have direct specific questions about what's going on with your existing grant, I would presume you ought to be able to ask Pam, because I assume that she, yeah, she put the application in. So she ought to be able to tell you, uh, what you're expecting for reimbursement and when that's coming, but...
Yes.
Passport grant, sixty-fourty, I think that's what it was.
I beg your pardon?
Sixty-fourty.
Sixty-fourty. And, uh, and a trust fund grant is...
Minimum twenty-five percent local match. The more local match you put in, you know, the, uh, the higher you score.
Yeah, sixteen.
But at, but at a minimum, uh, twenty-five?
Yeah, let's, let's...
Yeah, I have bills, we have bills to pay to the person who is creating this park for us now. And I don't have any grant money.
Yeah.
Will you do your title search, the mineral rights go with the property?
We...
Because I know that ninety-seven acres, I bet my hundred dollars, what the sewers gave it to you, you did not get the mineral rights.
Probably not.
One of the things that will be, one of the things that will be identified in the title search is the condition of the mineral rights, whether or not they come with the property.
Right.
Could be one of the deciding factors. You could decide we're not taking it if we don't, yeah. You could decide we're not going to get it if we don't get the mineral rights. But we'll find out through a title search, but that's a little ways down the road.
Yeah, maybe we should ask some more questions and look a little bit.
Well, yeah, so let me do this. I'll, I'll, I'll go back to Brian and say, sniff around a little bit and see what we can come up with, with, uh, for some values. And maybe you guys can ask Pam, uh, what the status is of your current development grants, uh, uh, you know, where you are in the reimbursement cycle on that, when that money is coming back. So you have a sense of, of, uh, the timing on that. And then maybe that will add, uh, some specificity to the discussion going forward. How's that?
That would be good.
All right, yeah.
We just redid the numbers and we would be left with two hundred and twenty-eight thousand in, in the parks after our forty percent of just this, this space.
You have two hundred and twenty-eight thousand left in your parks fund, you're saying?
After phase one.
After phase one and two. We still have phase three.
Do you have any projections on cost for phase three?
No, we, um, it looked like we scored too low for this cycle. We could reapply for next year on that, so, um... But they're going to, was it tomorrow is the meeting?
Yeah, what, did you, you apply for a development grant from the trust fund?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the decision meeting is tomorrow. So, uh, I will, uh, I have a note to mention in, in my comments to the trust fund board and I will, uh, let you know. Everybody will be sitting there with bated breath as I go down the list.
Right.
And I will let you know, oh, you did, it's easy enough for me to, I can, uh, get ahold of you, Joe, or I can get ahold of Colleen, or...
Yeah, give me a call.
Okay, yeah, we will, we will let you know.
Other question, so when he asked about mineral rights and you said that could be a deal breaker, depending on how people feel about it, and then you said it was down the road, why wouldn't that be upfront when we're making the decision if we are going to go down the road?
Well, that's a, so that is a chicken or the egg, uh, discussion, right? Are you going to pay for a title search now, uh, going into this? Or are you going to wait to find out whether or not you've even got a viable deal? And then you start crossing the bridges of, of the due diligence stuff.
Well, if I'm buying a property, I'll spend the money to have the title search done because...
Once you get to the place... Yeah, but you probably do that once you get a purchase agreement in place. And the purchase agreement will have contingencies, and one of the contingencies is the mineral rights. And the title search says the mineral rights are severed and you can't have them. Then you get to back out of the deal and you get your deposit back. But you typically don't pull the trigger on the due diligence stuff. You don't spend that money unless you've got a real good chance, uh, that you're going to go forward with the deal and get it closed.
With all these grant monies in that, does the state of Michigan mineral division, the oil and gas royalties, do they have grants to apply to?
That's what the Natural Resources Trust Fund does.
Okay.
That's what funds it. Okay, so I've got, so I've got some marching orders here.
Please.
And we'll look into this more and we, on our end, we'll do some research and we have some options.
Yeah, you'll, so you'll at least have solid understanding of, of what you've got and we'll get a solid understanding of what the, the potential of the cost is and we'll come back to you with some other options. How's that?
Okay, good.
Fabulous, thank you guys, thanks so much for having me.
Thanks for having me. Thanks for your time.
We remain excited and we're going to make this happen. We will figure it out.
Thank you for having me.
I love your optimism, your hopefulness, Chris.
So this is why Brian should have been here. He literally is the president of the Optimist Club. And I put a sign on his computer in the office, he is our oracle of optimism.
Yeah, when he, when I first, him and I walked the property back about a month and a half ago, he says, oh, this is so incredible, this is so incredible, you know?
Yeah.
What you guys are doing here, not just on the potential...
What you're doing, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and Brian, of course, is a parks director, so he loves to see that stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
And listen, thanks all of you guys for your service, right? Being a public servant is a fabulous thing. One of the great things about living in this country, thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
All right.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
Next one is High Tech Privilege Access Management. Okay, this is... Okay, um, thank you there, Jean. Um, yeah, they sent us here, this is High Tech. High Tech is growing out an additional tool to our tech care clients. It's called Privilege Access Management. This tool helps us further secure your network and reduce threats. Many cyber insurance companies are beginning to make this mandatory, get lower premiums. High Tech has installed this tool on, on all of our clients free of charge. The only cost to the township will be a license of, of a few, two dollars per month per device. So Casco Township, it would be twenty-four dollars a month, added to your existing agreement. Please confirm that you're okay with this. My engineers are ready to install this currently. Have a great day. That's twenty-three dollars a month?
Did you find out how much of the break you would get from the insurance company?
No, I haven't contacted them yet, so...
And I guess my question about that would be, is that the only company that can install for you or is there...
We have a contract with them, that's our IT company.
Yeah. They do excellent work for us too. So you want to give us until I find out what you're asking for? What do you guys think for this public access management? Another layer of security?
Is it necessary? What's your revenue, Charlie?
It's twenty-four bucks a month. I, we got hacked before.
It's no rater. I'll move that way.
Go ahead.
Okay, we have a motion and you support it, Colleen?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so do the public access, access management for every two dollars per computer would be twenty-four dollars, uh, per month. Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
And, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Vivenz, yes.
Dover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Citizens comment.
Mary Jo Walentobin, I, uh, do have the six benches. If I can get the date of when the park, uh, committee is going to have a meeting or whatever to discuss whether those benches will be, if the board is going to accept them as donations or if we're going to put them along the Lake to Lake Trail or the elementary schools or whatever variable options there are for those benches. But they have them collected and the, um, communities, um, community and business owners have paid for all of those fees in full, other than the little plaque that, um, will go on them. So, do you have the date?
Yeah, the Bioshield Committee, that's, um, I'll get to your exact date, it's toward the end of January.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll get you the exact date.
And, um, thank you for the brochure and our bill, uh, mailing. I wonder if, um, when we get our next tax bill, I mean, this year isn't over yet. When we get our next tax bill, will it include the, um, like the statistical information that we used to receive?
Statistical and which area?
Like, you know, the average, uh... Oh, oh, I thought you meant on the tax bill. Oh, no, 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 it, what I meant was mailing it with, so it's not additional mailing. But like, you know, the average age of people are this and this many people moved out and this many houses and...
Yeah, I don't...
Oh, we could look to...
That was done at the supervisor's preference.
Yeah.
He had the, he took the time to gather that information and...
I could, I could...
I know, and I brought it up before, there was like, almost everybody that was here that day was like, oh, yeah, we save ours too. Yeah, we, we do.
Okay, we could add that.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Oh, wait. Uh, Nick Graber, live at forty-eight, forty-eight Melville. With the purchasing of the park and all that stuff, have you guys reached out to, I don't know how much of it floods or is habitable for waterfall? If there's a lot of grassland, you could reach out to Pheasants Forever.
Yeah.
Um, Ducks Unlimited, Whitetail's Unlimited might get involved, but I don't know how much deer held in there. Um, St. Clair Falls Waterfall Association.
I mean, do they fund areas that they don't, just conservation, not no hunting?
They do some areas that are just conservation.
Okay.
Where there's no hunting allowed because it does, they're, they're in the flight paths.
Right.
I mean, Whitetail's Unlimited, probably not because it's not going to be accessible for hunting. But for waterfall and pheasants, I know Pheasants Forever has always been trying to get the population to regrow again, which, if you see pheasants out here, you might see five.
There's plenty.
I've seen two dead on the road and one alive, so...
Yeah, you know, that, that's good, I have a mirror though, but that's a...
Because if there, if it floods and there's a lot and it stays wet for the whole spring, that's great breeding ground for ducks. No jump on that one.
Casco should be the capital of duck production because they don't clean the ditches in this township.
Yeah, we've had...
And fields flood, so...
Yeah, we've had...
Straight up your alley.
We've had groups like the, um, the Friends of St. Clair River and that support us, but that, I mean, there's more, um, technical support and stuff like that.
Yeah, the old Ducks Unlimited.
Can you email us?
I can email. They do already, I mean... They might say no, they might want to look at it, I mean...
I wonder, do they have their meetings at first point, or...
I know they have their banquet there because I go to all of them, spend a lot of money.
Yeah, they're, yeah.
But I know the guy that runs Ducks Unlimited for Uginac, um, I can talk to him and the other ones. I don't really know anybody that does anything for Pheasants Forever anymore.
Yeah.
But I do know some guys on the boards are the other ones.
I would say one of those, it was Anthony Carroll's there in Chesterfield. But I mean, they're a political action committee, they are...
In September.
Oh, it's been a few years ago.
St. Clair Falls Waterfalls does theirs on, does theirs on September.
And after me, they discuss different initiatives, I mean, they're a political action committee, they're all...
Ducks Unlimited bought the, the tractors over on the island, so, you know.
Okay, that's, thanks.
It might save some money.
For something like that, though, like, would you need to have phase three done so that if you're proposing for a grant from them, it's not, you know, we're not allowed to put this walkway right here because there's a puddle that we're filling in? I mean, something to where the, both people are aware...
If you're going to fill the land into where it's not going to be usable, then they won't. But if, if you're going to set ten acres of the twenty-eight acre parcel aside as it's going to be just left alone and not touched, they might just have trails cut through it.
Well, that's, that's the only thing I can see.
They would jump on that, so...
Well, that's what I'm talking about, but Nick, if there's just like one area where it flows and, and so you put a couple acres of, yeah. But that's all I can see that that parcel is good for in the back. I wouldn't develop it at all. I do trails and let the ducks run where they will. Up to the dairy.
Jerry, Jerry Calliffe, three nine four Church Road, Casco. Now I got four questions. Huh?
Public security number?
I'm not sure. Okay, the first question is, uh, Q, do you guys got to make a motion to postpone that agreement? Because that didn't hear you do it. You got to make a motion.
No, he, he, we're just getting more information, we didn't act on it.
Okay. But that was an, that was an agreement to purchase.
We had a contract in front of you, it's a twenty thousand dollars.
For five thousand.
Well, we're going to, we're, we haven't acted on it, he's going to get more information, then we'll...
Okay, so we'll check that one out. We'll go to the Blake guy, so you have to wait for that. Um, so once, once you're cited, just, I thought there was a time period that the homeowners had to clean up their mess from the date you were cited, because I haven't seen too many cleanups in the township.
Yeah.
Wasn't it timed?
There, there is a time period, there is the first letter sent, the second letter sent, the third letter sent, and then...
Fourteen days with the first letter. Fourteen days. Fourteen days with the second letter, ten days with the attorney letter, and then we see where it goes from there as far as district court or circuit court or...
Make them send a attorney, it's going to cost them more money.
And sometimes you work with them.
Sometimes I work with them, sure, absolutely.
So after thirty-eight days, it's going to court, if there's been no response?
Not always, sometimes there's extensions for people, I mean, I, all right.
Doesn't it start out as a conversation then, with the homeowner, as opposed to a letter?
Sometimes.
Yeah, I just wonder.
Fourteen, fourteen, ten. Um, here's three. If the township was to sell property, does that go to a community vote?
Not the community, I, I read it those...
Well, township resident vote, does it go on a ballot?
This particular, this particular property that we're talking about.
We were talking about selling property?
Yes, that was given to the township through a fish kill years and years ago. And I'd have to research that a little bit. I don't think so.
Doesn't that have to be a site at any meeting by itself?
That, well, but we used to, we used to do all those things at an annual meeting, but the state has reduced what you can do at an annual meeting to just salaries. We used to vote on a paper of record. Every once in a while, we'd vote on, do we want garbage pickup, you know? That always ended well.
So, it's not.
So, it's, it's not something that we're allowed to do at an annual meeting. We bought the property with, the Meisner Road property without a vote of the township.
It was gifted, wasn't it?
I beg your pardon?
It was gifted, wasn't it?
Gifted.
That 97 acres? With that Luddington fish kill deal?
Well, that's what I'm talking about. It was a fish kill deal.
Yeah, but you said we bought it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think it was a gift.
And the, the Adair Road or the St. Clair Highway and the other two properties.
Is that still 38 acres there on St. Clair Highway?
No, no, it's, it's two five acre parcels or two, this is a five acre, this is an 8.3 acre parcel. Both owned by the township because of that fish kill. We, at one point, were saving that before we started work on this, thinking that perhaps we would move the township up to a paved road, you know? But that's not going to happen. So, but really, to an eight acre parcel in a five acre parcel, what is the township going to do with that? Other than put it up for sale, and it would have to go to.
Didn't that one time they had 38 acres?
Well, yes, but, but it's been developed on the other side. There were four people that bought.
Right.
On Adair Road, on Adair Road, yes. Yeah, so those are all gone. And the two remaining on St. Clair Highway are these. And we've just been holding on to them.
Yeah. Although we've had some interest in them.
Well, we have, but the, but the fact of the matter is, if we decide to sell, I can't pick up the phone and have somebody say, Colleen, I'd like to buy that five acres. No, we have to let the public bid on the five acres. We have to take bids. That's, you can't do a closed door deal like that.
So, my last question is, as bad as it was farming this year, this goes back to the ditching issue. Who determines where the ditches need to be necessary and not?
The drainage.
When we did Church Road, I was under the impression, I was told, that they're going to do the east side of the road from Lindsay to Putty Gut, but they only did half of it from Putty Gut.
Yeah.
Bag.
Yeah, that's the.
There's like no ditch on the east side.
Yeah, our area foreman, he determines which areas that need to be ditched along there.
The area foreman for the county?
Well, for the road commission for this area. He does like that for any of the ditching within the township.
Is that in life?
Yeah.
Oh.
Good, so go twist a few ones.
And if they do ditching, if not because of the farmer's request, it'd be a liability, too much water on the road that the county couldn't issue, that's the only reason.
Well, that's the main purpose of the road ditch, is to get the water off the road.
There are no road ditches in these townships from what was built back in the 20s. And the culverts are three quarters full.
And I, like I.
Tells you something on maintenance.
Well, like I said, and I've said this other meeting, if I could have one thing as supervisor, that I could have a crew continuously clean out ditches and drains within the township. Of course, yeah, we're going to be doing some this coming year there on Springborn Road, ditches that probably haven't been cleaned out in decades, just like the one. So, who determine that? What's that? We work with the road commission on that. Oh, okay. And then they, you guys set a budget fund for them or something? Yeah, well, they, we have a couple different, we have our regular ditch maintenance fund. Then we have a match grant, like this year, we did Beezy Road, we finished that. We had to ditch that on the north side up to the county drain where the old railroad bed. That hadn't been cleaned out probably, I don't know, 80, 70 years. And next year, we'll be doing now on Springborn Road. Yeah. Yeah, so it's just a lot of, like I said, if I could have a crew, that's all they did was clean ditches and drains. Then we just. But Church Road is like, isn't that, that's considered a county.
That's a county road.
Yeah, that doesn't come out of our fund. Okay. Yeah.
So, for personal driveways, the two underneath the driveway between the road and that's, whose responsibility is it to keep those clean? Isn't it the homeowner?
Yeah, the homeowner is required to keep it clean. When they clean out a ditch, that means they dredge it out. I mean, it's.
A lot of times, there's the, the plug and drain.
But you know, but you can, but you can call the road commission and they can, what are they?
A jetta.
A jetta, yeah. That's, that's always helpful. You got to. Probably, I don't know. I mean, I, I've never had that myself, but.
Mayor Joe, like, we, a resident, I talked to him today, he has a tree in his ditch. It's, so the road commission don't get around to it. They're, right now, because of the rain, they're a little delayed getting their projects done. They're going to replace a culvert over county drain on Springborn Road. Once they get that done, then they'll go take care of like some trees and ditches and stuff like that. So.
I just wondered, personal driveways, if each homeowner maybe put that on the note.
Oh, I keep thinking, it's not on the tax bill.
Yeah, by the way, I know, I have personally dug out neighbors' holes just because mine wasn't drained.
But yeah, the thing is, like, there's a, there's issue, I dealt with an issue a couple weeks ago, where it was a good ditch, but it's just a lot of grass and weeds have grown in it. If they get it, it's been a wet year, but once they get that thing, that's going to help clean the water. There is no problem with the depth of the ditch that was probably dead several years ago, probably within the last 10 years.
I can tell you my ditch is full of cattails and my ditch flows just fine. The thing that it does, well, now it's kind of jammed up is where the county came through this grade roundup to kill one frag money, and they killed a 30-foot stretch, and all of those fell into the ditch. It also filters out a lot of the garbage that people like to just throw out of their cars.
Okay. Okay.
Another question from Colleen, my last question. We're talking taxes and ditching. Can a citizen get, on this winter tax, you got a drain tax?
Yes.
The exact dollars levied on property in Casco Township, the tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars due this winter tax, can you give me that number? I'm curious to see.
Oh, when I, when I settle down, in fact, I can, I can pull it from my last year's, what I collect.
I mean, I don't, was there a drain tax last year?
Oh, oh, yeah. I've had, yes, yes. Ever since Mr. Wiley's been in office, we've been cleaning drains.
Right, but I'm saying, I don't care if it's $10,000 or $100,000 or a million. We send that apparently to the drain commission.
We do.
To get squat in return.
We do, well.
I got a problem with that.
Yeah, and I can, yeah, I can tell you how much I collect. And then how much goes delinquent. And, and the other thing that happens, one thing that I am happy to see this year is that veterans, somebody's, somebody is getting on the stick because a whole lot of veterans exemptions have come through. But even veterans have to pay the drain tax. It does, if you're, if all of your taxes are exempt from collection, I still have to go in and collect that drain tax.
Right, but I'm saying, 20 years ago, didn't we have, I don't remember a drain tax on the Casco.
Well, that's because, do you remember the drain commissioner from 20 years ago?
That, or Fuller?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did he clean drains?
No.
No, so we didn't tax it either.
With a new tax man or a drain commissioner, I don't see much excitement down here.
Well, you know, I, but he's, he's, he went and a whole lot of.
I know, but where's them dollars going?
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not the, I'm not the drain.
Right, but it makes one ask the question.
The question is, where's the accountability?
Right.
Yeah, well, that, that lies with Mr. Wiley.
Right.
And the drain commission.
Yeah, and they make their determination because they've got their, they're cleaning out various drains around the county right now, so.
But yeah, I have the exact amount. I can give you the exact amount at the end of my tax year, how much I collect, and how much is levied. You know, that's because it's going to get collected one way or the other. I'm going to either collect it, or it's going to go delinquent to the county and they're going to collect it, but it gets collected.
Right.
Yes.
But what do we get for it?
Well, that's, that's a little bit above my pay grade. I don't tell the drain to be so concerned.
If you've physically seen something happen.
Happening.
You don't.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, board comments?
I have four, maybe more. First of all, I want to let everybody know that there will not be a planning commission meeting next week for lack of items on the agenda. So, the next one will be in January.
Right, the 19th of January, 7:00 PM.
So, just want to throw that out there. Second of all, we had our clerk's luncheon for the St. Clair County Clerk's Association, and I got a $500 scholarship. Going to use it towards education, training conferences.
I have one. Oh. That's wonderful.
Yes, little bit of good news. Then I'll throw the election budget numbers that I kind of cranked out after that little $500 I got. It's not going to be pretty, but just a heads up, we're going to need like 30, over $30,000 for elections for next year. Just for August and November.
And what do we get for that?
Nothing.
Yeah. We get new policies.
You have your constitutional, constitutional right to vote.
Right, so. That was.
Yes, I suppose that's the, that's the bright side of it. You have a constitutional right to vote.
Right.
Good for you.
Only if you're vote counts. Right. And then the last thing I have is, we have to have a special election commission meeting, which is just the three of us. It's open to the public, so if anyone wants to come, but it's going to be during the day. We have to, one of the new rules or mandates from Prop 22-2 is we have to have the commission, the election commission approve the AV counting board for, I don't know if it's for the early voting survey?
No, it's just for election.
Yeah, so we have to do that by December 29th. I just found that out today, so.
Okay.
But we'll just do it during the day and it'll take two minutes.
And we do a county, a county board all the time.
Yes, we do. So, we're just basically saying yes, the board, the, the election commission will pay that. So, those are my four little things.
Okay, I just have one thing. Are you going to consider selling this property? A vacant lot in Adair and a vacant lot in St. Clair Highway? I'm not putting it on for a roll call vote, but I'm telling you. Money adds up.
Right.
Well, and property is going for a good price right now.
You know, I would love to, of course, in addition to our park, sounds like a very nice thing to have if we can afford it. We cannot. We are not the federal government. We cannot rob Peter to pay Paul.
No.
Come on. We can't bring more money.
Yeah. We can't do that. And we have to always keep in mind that if the park and rec vote goes down, people decide they're not going to support this, we're in trouble. Because then it comes out of the general fund, and that's what Karen was always worried about, that's what Bill was always worried about. And that's looking down the road, too. So, we have to think very carefully with the funds that we have for the people in Casco. And are we better off concentrating on one part and, and putting our resources in that? Or are we going to, you know, fragment what we have with a parcel here and a parcel here and something, something? I wish I had the vision to see what we will need in the future. But not only do I not have the vision, I don't have the money. And we don't take in that much money when it comes to keeping our park that we have trimmed and guarded. And one of these days, I'd really love to have a, dig a well and have bathrooms there instead of porta-johns, et cetera, et cetera. Fine, but it all takes money. So, think about that a little bit.
Okay, no, I have no problem with the St. Clair Highway property selling that, so.
So, the planning meeting, I'm sorry, on the 19th, is that going to cover the?
That's canceled.
Oh, the one.
You might want to recheck that date. I think the 19th of January is a Thursday. I believe it's the 16th.
Okay.
It is the 16th.
Well, I know he said.
It's the 15th.
Yeah, he's a 16th.
It's the, it's the third Tuesday in January.
Okay, is that when the lavender farm is going to be?
They have them reapplied.
So, we wouldn't know that until, like, if they reap, I don't know.
It won't be on the agenda.
Yeah.
It won't be.
If, if there's no action, though, you'll see it. If they're on the agenda for January, you'll see it on the agenda.
Yeah.
As of yet, they have them reapplied.
Because it seems like there was a whole lot of, of community members here that were against it for variable and unity reasons. So, I mean, would a petition help the board make a decision based upon the majority of the community?
They can't do that. They have to hear, they make their decisions on the merits of the case.
Yeah, but this is, there's a zoning issue. There's already some, you know, it's like a special, you have to give special considerations.
Well, that'll be discussed when that case is here again, okay? Okay, Dan or Gina, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, yeah, I have a couple things. Dan and I, I don't know, Colleen, if you went to it, there's a group that was exploring getting money from the Ralph Wilson Foundation to do the trail from Richmond to St. Clair. Well, I guess they're getting closer to that goal, and they may be looking to the local group to help them. See, that's a, so, I don't know, I haven't, it's very preliminary. I don't know what side of the road it would be on, but there's a lot of interest at our park. Whether it was this trail would join the McComb Orchard Trail to Bridge to Bay Trail, and they would also complete the Coast to Coast Trail in Michigan. And our park is seen as kind of a nice stopping point, collection point for that. So, yeah, I don't know. It's just very preliminary right now. On the November 18th, we had our park groundbreaking and like rededication down there. It went very well. How would you think? Yeah, so it was on YouTube. It was cold, but nice and bright.
Did I hit you when you hit me?
So, but, okay. We'll be getting some COVID money, ARPA money from the county. It was part of the, some of the money that the county got, and they're distributing to townships, and we're going to be using ours to replace a bunch of several culverts over county drains that need to be replaced. Well, we're doing one on Springborn Road, hopefully either this week or next week. And then we got three others that are getting, within a couple of years, are replaced.
I think there's one on Hessens South.
Yeah, yeah, on Hessens, yeah, there's one. One on Springborn Road, and I think the other one's on Hessens.
Maybe we're doing something out there this morning.
Yeah, so, okay, all right, if there's nothing else.
I make a motion to a, a second.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Blue Water Fallen Heroes Community Banner Program is in need of these fallen hero photos in the Casco area. If you have a photo, please contact 810-434-6407 or email WEICHSLER10101. or email WEICHSLER10@gmail.com.